Today, if you could turn the microphone on, leave it on. I would also ask that if everybody could shut their phones off or at least take it down to an extreme minimum so we don't hear it ringing while we're in the middle of our meeting. There's a lot of people in here today. If there's any emergencies or a need to leave the room, you can go out of the front of the building, the back of the building, meet over by the Methodist Church. And pretty much familiar faces will all know if somebody else, God forbid, is stuck in here if something's wrong. So with that, I'm going to open the meeting and we're going to go a little out of order today. First thing I will do though is ask for a motion to accept the minutes from, sorry?
November sixteenth.
Sorry, November sixteenth, you said? October?
Motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? No, thank you. So the way we're going to do this first is we're going to take care of some administrative business. It looks like we've got some people here that want to speak to the Villages Project. And I know everyone knows that they did come here before the town asking for an amendment to a resolution that was approved back in August of 2024. And we had some restrictions on there and some, I want to say we'll call them safety nets for both them and us so that we could make sure that what they were building, they were going to build properly or in a timeframe that we were hoping that they would be able to, can I say it that way? And with phase control and a lot of different things, expecting that the ALF would be also a part of that construction before it was finally built. The applicant has come to us and asked us if they could have a modification in that resolution, asking to see if we could give them the other two phases before the ALF was started or built. And I'm going to say, what else can we talk about on this one? I mean, I want to be, I want to be straight up with it, but you know, we looked at this last week or last month and the board went back and forth numerous times over what it was we were able to do with this. And I just want to say that our, most of our concerns and the highlight of our concerns were definitely the density issues that that would pose. Not so much that, so everybody who understands this, the density issues would be out of line for the amount of building that would be built for that acreage of property. And it would put the, the planning board in a situation where we weren't compliant to the zoning code if we were to allow that. So we didn't, I'm going to ask Paul to maybe interject a little bit here because I'm trying to do this off memory too, so.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's a fair way of putting it, Scott. I mean, the, the applicant had come to the planning board and they, they're a lot further along this year than they were last year. They've actually now gotten a permit from the New York State DOH for construction of the assisted living facility. That's a big step and it's something that the planning board had been looking for from them for a long time. They're, they're in a position, they say, now to move forward and get all the building permits, start building the assisted living facility, also start building the cottages. What they were asking for, because as Scott had said, the 2024 resolution had limited them to a certain number of the cottages, 115, which is roughly equivalent to the density for residential units that would be allowed on the entire property. The planning board had not wanted to go any further than that because of the concern that the assisted living facility was not a sure thing and it hadn't started to be built. And you really need that assisted living facility together with the cottages to be the planned residential retirement development that the town board originally approved. So, but the, the applicant, to their credit, they've made some headway, they've got the traffic light in, they finally got the Apple Lane remediation done. And they have a more organized financial package that we had some information about that they believe will put them at a position with lenders in the next several months to get the money that they need to fund construction of the project. So they asked for this, a little additional flexibility from the planning board, but my, my understanding from the planning board is that they're, sort of the consensus is that it's a bridge too far at this time. You know, if they had the assisted living facility mostly built, you know, and, and you guys could count on it being more of a sure thing, that might be different. And then, then, because at the end of the day, your, your building department has to say that what's been constructed out there complies with the zoning code. And so anyway, so that's, that's kind of a lot more, maybe more than you did, but, but the board asked me, or I was directed to prepare a resolution that would essentially say all of that and would be denial of their request at this time. Because maybe, maybe, you know, a year from now when they're, you know, much more further along, come back and talk to the board.
Yes, after review and consideration of what everybody was talking about at the, the meeting the last time, it, it seemed to be a general consensus that density was an issue. And, you know, a little more thought afterwards because we don't just do this in an hour or two that we're here. We do think about this stuff all the time and we communicate maybe between me and the attorney or me and the planner. Might even get the applicant involved too in a couple of conversations where needed. But, um, you know, we decide, you know, it's a great project. We believe it'll be an asset to the community when it is built. It's, it's no begrudging the, the development at all of what it is, okay? But with too much risk outweighing the reward for this short of time and the amount of time that's gone by from the time that they were supposedly starting the construction, you know, it just seems that we're just not, not so much in compliance with getting a, what can I say, building quickly, quick enough? So that's really where we're at. Show us, show us what you can do in, in six months, a year, whatever it is, and then maybe come back and see what you got. This is the best way I could look at it. I don't know how fast your development's going to go, so. But I will say, I, I will ask the applicant to come up and speak too, if you don't mind. And I just ask everyone in the public, if you're going to get comments, please keep them to yourself. I'll ask and open the public meeting when it happens and then you'll all have a chance to speak to it. I will say, just before Mr. Sanderson and your attorney get together, I'm going to have the rest of, just explain a few things to the public. You're fine. You, you already know this. You've been here a thousand times, so. Or at least in a meeting with us for a thousand times. But this is not about traffic. This is not about what the houses or the cottages are going to look like or the ALF is going to look like. All that has been passed and approved. So if you're here to talk about that, hold your tongue. It's not what we're talking about, okay? And I won't let it go on. I'll stop it. We're not campaigning anymore. We're done. You have issues, you think you want to do something later on in the future, that's great, do that. Go talk to your town board that you got and have them design whatever, however you want that to work. It's not going to happen here. We're trying to get the applicant through. We're trying to help the betterment of the community and make sure that we're heard for the desires of the town and for the community. So I ask everybody just please, keep your comments and public comments to the issue at hand, and that's the modification of the resolution, okay? That's the best way we can go with this. If not, it's going to get way out of control and I'll slap that mallet down on the table a few times. And if you're unruly, I'm asking you to leave. That's just how that works. We do this on a part-time basis, not for work, but volunteer, okay? And I'm going to say I've heard more comments and I dare to even freaking hear again, that we're in the pockets of the developers. And I could tell you, being on this board for as many years as I've been here, I will say that any of my judgment has never been made of my opinion or what my beliefs may be. I have to follow the zoning code. That is written, that your town board members write that up, the zoning board approves, and they're the ones that will tell us and, and enlighten us on what that code may or may not mean with the assistance of our attorneys and engineers and our staff that we have. So this isn't just willy-nilly and Charlie doesn't get to say, well, he likes purple houses, so that's what he wants in the town. He doesn't get to do that. If they're acceptable and they're approved and it's a part of the zoning code, they get purple houses. People have to understand that in a community. Take a civics class, it might help you to understand how this works. So that goes out to Zoom Land Two who's hearing and they just want to keep going on Facebook saying how bad we are in the pockets of the developers, okay? And my decision to talk to Paul about how drafting up that draft resolution declining their requests, that's, right now, it's just a conversation. The board would have to pass that, so it's not set in stone. I don't know if Jerry is going to have a change of heart and say, yes, he wants them to have this. I don't know. But I could say as far as the last conversation we had here in, in this board meeting, it was pretty much a hundred percent, nobody wanted this to go on. Not as far as the modification goes, not the, not the project. So with that being said, you know, whatever you want to read in Facebook or you want to hear from other people who just have maybe that much of the information after the six years we have put to this, I think that maybe a little more open mind would help and understand that we are here helping. We're trying to help. We're trying to do the right thing by the community. And I could tell you, I think Mr. Sanderson could tell you too, after being here almost, what is it, six years now? Just almost six years now? This has been worked on. This has been worked on. We've brought it to the community. We've had public hearings. We've had issues that the community's brought. We've enlightened the applicant on what might have needed to be done, what the community wanted to have, what we thought would help the community. And he has obliged us with most of that on print and some of the things he's done already in the, in the, on the site itself. So I will ask everybody, we don't change our mind because of what some elected official or what the constituents want, because we're not constituent people. We, we don't run that way. We run by an appointment of the town board and the members there. So that's how we were all chosen. That's how we all got here. And I think every member on this board will tell you, we don't voice opinions, feelings, or any of that nature. We look at what the law says. We get advice of counsel. And again, that's where we're at with this. Just, I ask everybody to respect that and talk to us like we're not the enemy. We're just trying to help you guys at the same time, so. Now we can go on. Sorry if you had to hear all that, but if I don't make it clear, I can imagine where this is going to go in 20 minutes.
My name is Mark Sanderson and I'm the owner of the project. And I'm here with a gentleman that finally understands the project and finally knows how to raise the money for this project. And I'm in, he and I are in total agreement that we have to build the ALF at the same time that we're building the roads for the independent living. Just so you understand, I'm not building the cottages. I create the roads, you approve them, and then my sales force convinces people to buy a cottage from a manufacturer. They own the house. They put in the foundation with their builder. They pull that permit for that house. And then I charge them a land lease. That's that. At the same time, my responsibility is to complete the ALF. And what I, I'm in complete agreement that as time goes by and as we do the ALF, you can ease up on the conditions. What I'm going to suggest to you is what I call like a milestone. It's easier for him to convince investors to put up the money if they know they can build the ALF for sure and they know that they can build all the roads for sure. So what I'm suggesting is, as we build the ALF and say we get 25% done, then you give us 25% of the 82 lots. It goes hand in hand. It goes hand in hand with the ALF. And the minimum and the maximum amount of time would be a year and a half. We will build the ALF within a year and a half. And he assures me that if we can modify it somewhat to make his investors happier, because they're going to put up a lot of money, then we can start the construction the end of January, beginning of February. That's what he thinks. So, uh, and, and it was just a thought of mine that you could tie it to the building of the ALF. I've already made application to pull the permit to build the ALF and the pump station. Because you've got to have the pump station and, and that's only going to take about three months, once we start building the pump station. The ALF will take about a year and a half. So at that time, at that juncture, as we do the ALF and we're also doing the roads for the independent living, once you see that we're done, and it's only a suggestion, once you see 25% of the ALF is done, then you let loose with some of the 82 lots. That's all. So Armand will explain everything to you. He's, we, we got to convince him. That's what I'm trying to do. So, gentlemen, Armand Pastine.
Thank you.
Please speak into the mic.
My name, sorry. Thank you. My name's Armand Pastine. I am, first of all, thank you Chairman McCarthy, members of the town planning board and the guests behind me. My name's Armand Pastine. I'm a senior managing director and head of capital markets at Selladon Financial Group. We're a Jersey-based broker dealer and advisory firm. And we're here to speak on behalf of the project owner, Mr. Sanderson. And I want you to consider an amendment to condition five, which you approved back in August 22 of 24, a resolution for the villages in the Hudson Valley. If it's okay, I'd like to have these remarks put into the record and I can give you a copy of them when we're done, but I just want to.
You can send them to the planning board.
We don't.
Or the town.
That's fine.
Building department.
Thank you. Selladon's been selected as the underwriter of, in a placement agent for the villages in Hudson Valley project. And as you may recall, the project is a senior living community for residents aged 62 years and older with a state-approved licensed assisted living facility in 197 independent cottages. It's approved under the Town of Lloyd's zoning code, section 100 dash 23 dash two as a planned residential retirement community development with a density bonus, which is basically a fancy word for variance on the ALF being built, which means you gave them an approval that was conditional upon this taking place. Condition number five, in my view, prevents building permits and certificates of occupancy for phases E and F, which is 82 cottages, until the ALF has a certificate of occupancy sidewalks as well being installed as per the State Department of Transit, Department of Transportation. We believe through your patience and your support for this project that the town wants this project and they've gotten behind this project. Okay? And you need strong assurances that the assisted living facility is going to be completed. To give the town these assurances while allowing the project to move forward with the financing, we propose removing the certificate of occupancy requirement for phases E and F entirely. Not because Mr. Sanderson needs it as a condition to get the financing done, but because it directly serves the town's interests and objectives to remove it. And the reason we say that is, under the financing model, we're going to trap all the dollars that Mr. Sanderson makes off of the sale of the cottages. The financing will be a project finance transaction similar to a municipal project financing. And.
Could you just clear one thing up?
Here, please.
Because Mr. Sanderson said that he's not selling the cottages, but what money is to be made off of the cottage?
So the model is.
And I'm going to finish.
Please, please.
That could be trapped. That would be substantial enough to back up the rest of your.
Sure.
Needs there.
So the model that Mr. Sanderson's going after is a hybrid of a ground lease and membership fee, breaking apart the membership fee to be a member of the community. And they'll call it the chattel or the, the, the building component, the modular component that's going to go on the, on the pad. Mr. Sanderson will be the landowner and the owner of the development and they will pay a monthly service charge to the community, which he owns, and a $250,000 fee to join the membership of the community. One-time charge. How you get to that number is that we visited a few modular home manufacturers last, a couple of weeks with his advisors, looked at different manufactured, housing manufacturers. And the price for these 1,500 square foot units is somewhere between 200 to $250,000. He's giving a leasehold deed of trust to the owners, so they'll own their chattel on leased land. Okay? And the $250,000 membership fee, splitting the value of the, of the purchase, would go towards him building out the facility and the financing. The bondholders or the lenders here are going to require all of that money get trapped in a trust, in a lockbox and pledged towards the fulfillment of the ALF. So if you think about 250,000 on 82 units, it's a little over $20 million that's going to be pledged. Okay? Fully trapped, escrowed with the bank for the benefit of the bondholders. This 20 million is in addition to 30 million that will be already have been trapped and pledged on the sale of the original 115, which has already been approved without restrictions. So in, in its entirety, 20 million of the 82 units, 30 million for the 115 units. And on top of that, he's already put close to 30 million into this project. Okay? The project, when Mr. Sanderson started working on it many years ago before we got involved, he put a lot of the money into the independent living portion of the facility. These are three parcels, of which there's one big parcel for independent living, one big parcel for the assisted living, and there's some parcels involving the common areas. Okay? When you look at a financing of that type, you're looking for the equity. You're looking for where's the investment been put in? Most of this investment money was put into the one independent living facility. Makes it harder to sell the independent, the assisted living facility. When we looked at the project back at the end of the summer, early fall, we revisited the site, a little warmer than, than it was today. It was clear that this was only going to get financed if we combined the projects and trapped it onto one big greater project. Okay? Because an investor that wants to invest in this is going to want the synergies associated with an independent living facility and an assisted living facility to promote the community the same way you want the assisted living facility. People want to live here. They enjoy being here. They want to stay here. So the synergy of transitioning from independent living to assisted living is natural. This project is based off of what's taken place in New Paltz, about 13 miles up the road, maybe it's 10 miles, Woodland Ponds. That's a fully developed independent living, assisted living, and chronic CCRC, which is a very, very successful and vibrant community where people are spending almost a good chunk of their lives there over the, over their later years. Okay? Our financing is going to mirror that. Okay? Both on the construction side of things as well as the permanent financing, which will be municipal financing. The developer is not going to receive any profit or distributions from the sale of these units until the ALF, not just the certificate of occupancy is achieved, but the developer won't receive any profits till the entire project's refinanced into the permanent financing. He's stuck in the project. And we are structuring the debt so that he won't be able to sell the project until it's stabilized and refinanced. So he's in the deal to the end of the, to its natural conclusion. My position is that phases E and F, to release him from that condition five, doesn't hurt the town, it helps the town because it adds more capital and equity investment in the project. Meaning that if the construction budget on the assisted living facility is either side of $45 million and we're going to do a $95 million financing, okay, for both facilities, we have his $30 million of initial investment, for which I think he's already paid over a million dollars for the street light that's on that corner there that he paid for as a condition to proceed. Now, I didn't know this, but that light was a site of a scene where there was a fatality a few years back before that light was put in. He paid for that, almost a million and a half dollars as, as part of his economic commitment to the community. Okay? So what we're trying to do is not sell you on the idea to do him one more accommodation, but to buy into the idea that this is in your interest. If you want the assisted living facility to be completed, let us put more equity into the project by trapping more sales of the, of these independent living facilities. Why is that important? I've been on Wall Street for many years, 35 years plus. The first thing I learned on Wall Street is what is the definition of capital? What is the definition of equity? It is the ability to absorb loss. Projects need capital because they need to have the ability to absorb loss. We're trying to put and trap more capital in the project to benefit the community. Okay? It's not a sale pitch, it is a reality. We're going to bring institutional investors, qualified institutional investors, institutional accredited investors, but all of which are going to be committed to making sure that it not just gets built, not just to seow, but it's stabilized and can support the debt that's going to be on it. And in fact, my guess would be that the investors will insist that a portion of those proceeds pay down the debt after we satisfy the conditions of occupancy and therefore so on. So we think we'll be building the assistant, we're going to build them both at the same time. Okay? We're not building one and then the other. They're going to be building both of them simultaneously. So when we break ground, we're breaking ground on everything. Okay? So that within 12 to 18 months, this will be a moot point anyway, because we think we won't have 115 units of the independent living sold by then, but God willing, we could. Now, here's the thing, people that are in this room that are involved in real estate, people have bought and sold houses, markets are fickle. If the market's good and you can sell more units, why be deprived from selling more units when you can? You sell it when you can, not when you have to. So we want to give the town the optionality to take advantage of a good market that may be coming in this market price range, which is about 550,000 on average for these homes, which is somewhere around the median average home prices. So we're pricing it to a middle market community. So we want to make certain that we're all aligned in that. In that while we think we could still finance this project without this condition being removed, it's our strong belief that it's in the town's interest to embrace it. Because all it's going to do is greater ensure that the transaction takes place and the building gets built. We've been interviewing potential candidates to bigger, stronger operators that might come in and join the team that's already in place to kind of make certain that the investor community can get behind it. So I'll stop there and if there's any questions from the, from the members of the community that want to ask a question, I'll, I'll be glad to answer questions at the end. But what Mr. Sanderson was alluding to was other ways to get the town comfortable. And in addition to the existing improvements he's already made, maybe there's another escrow that can take place, another million dollars that can go into a beautification program that involves money that'll be released during, if milestones are met. There's no way we're running away from this, right? We, we, we've done, I think you've done a really good job of being patient and supportive of this project. I think we just want to make certain that everyone is just comfortable that we're not going to lend 100 million if we're not going to get an ALF built. That is the least of the goals. The goal is to get it working and get it fully occupied, or at least 95% occupied.
I like the way, if you don't mind, I like what you just said, that you're not going to lend 100, 100 million if you can't get the ALF, if you can't get the ALF built. Well, you're looking at the risk for the investors.
Yeah.
And you'd like to see that mitigated as much as possible. And I, as a chair of the planning board, would like to see our risk minimized as much as possible. And when you said that there was some things that, you know, we've, we've accommodated the applicant many times, based on, I'm going to say, call it structural, it's like an evolution, it's an evolutionary thing. It started this big and it's gotten so much larger. And then with so many of the requests that Mr. Sanderson has asked, and if we could actually apply it to the way the code is written, we would give him those, those changes or the requests that he had made. Unfortunately, in this one, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself, okay, after I've done the review, I'm not going to say it on behalf of the board because you all might have a different opinion, but again, having the conversation last month, I can clearly say that any agreement to give any more space to be built, any more homes to be built on a, in the zone it's in, we would be out of compliance with the code. You see where that puts us?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all, that's where I'm coming from. So I'm hearing you and your, your concern for your risk. Now I risk the, the integrity of the board if we were to say, yeah, go ahead, because who knows what the next builder is going to come in here and asks it. He just did it for Mr. Sanderson. You put the code aside and you let him do something. Can you do that for us? No, we can't. We can't do it for Mr. Sanderson. We can't do it for anybody. As much as I think the project is going to be great for the town, I personally don't feel that that would be the way for me even to hold my integrity that I've had being on the board as long as I have. So that being said, that's, Paul, I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
Just as a comment, I, I think the board should take heart that the applicant has said, not getting this condition won't preclude them from getting financing.
Right.
And that's great news.
Yes.
Because you all, the town, wants the project to succeed.
Yeah.
I think the, the, one thing to think about is, you know, at this point in time, you know, there are going to be sales of the cottages and there are 115 cottages that can be sold. That may be something you want to see. And when you get to a point that's a little further along and, and you're getting close to that 115, but on the other hand, you're also seeing the ALF halfway up.
Right, right. How many, how many have been sold so far? How many cottages?
You can sell any until you have the finished infrastructure in place, meaning that that's the whole problem is you can't sell the other 83, 82.
Let me roll back a little bit, because as of August of 2024, you had the authorization to go on with so many of those buildings right off the bat.
Right.
You had to meet so many contingencies that were along the way and then you were able to start your building. And we haven't seen any of those contingencies. Okay, I'll say that. So, but we, we haven't seen progression. You got where I'm going?
Sure.
So that's our concern. So even if, let's say we, I did an about face and we were considering doing the 82 homes on top of the 115. So now you got the ALF going, you've got the 115 built, you're looking to reach into the 82. Things are getting a little squirrely. Some investor decides, you know, I got to get out of this, I've got to do something different, I'm out. Whatever, I don't know the agreements that you'll have with them, but I'm in construction, run multimillion, 100 million projects at a time. I could tell you, I've watched people start a project, very happy, and I went back to work the next day and they were telling me how they were closing the doors, we're not doing it anymore. We're done. So that's my concern for the town, is having 115 or whatever amount of the first part of that being built and then maybe a sea of concrete pads, because you couldn't sell anymore, but you know, unless that's not how you're doing it, you're going to sell them and build them at the same time? So then, as you could tell, this could take forever.
It could take multi-years for sure. But, but, but the point.
And, and not having, having it your way, we still don't see that guarantee that the ALF will be completed or the 82 will be completed at the same time.
It, it can, you can get to a point, you know, I, I think you can ask Dave Barton, you know, there, there could be a point, because you're looking at the PRRD and the PRRD is the ALF and the cottages. You have approval to go ahead and build 115 cottages at this point.
Right.
I think the plans are all.
Plans are ready to go.
So, you know, it's all in place, you just need to get the permits and start doing the work. If you get to a point where your sales are going gangbusters, you know, that would be the time, and your ALF is going up, that would be the time to come in. that would be the time and your ALF is going up, that would be the time to come in. And then the town would still get the benefit of having that extra twenty million dollars go into the lockbox to help guarantee the project. So the town.
I may be inclined, I mean, my, I personally would be inclined to consider it then because at least I'm seeing the full view, the PRRD being built.
That's right.
You got what I'm saying? That's what I'm looking at. And I.
Great, we have no guarantees.
Right, right, agreed.
But it's going to be, there's going to be a construction guarantee on the facility from the, from, from the lenders are going to require that.
But that's not with us.
No, it's not.
That's right, that's between you and the lender.
Yep, and there will be.
It's a million dollars that was laid out also for a, what we call a bond, so to speak.
Yep.
I don't know what a million dollars is going to do for anything.
There's also a provision in the financing that will have a construction monitor that will be interfacing with the town on periodic and at least no less than monthly reviews of the construction, improvement, milestones.
Which will happen anyway.
It's happening anyway.
Yeah.
And, and the fact that we walk away with a, with a town still supportive of the project and getting behind the project and willing to have a discussion down the road as milestones met is, is good enough. To the end, you know, the, the idea would be to be able to fund the whole deal, to not have an investor come, bond investor, lender come to the table and see your condition. Conditions are, you know, we do have approval to do a hundred and ninety-seven units if the ALF is completed. So the variance is in place, it just doesn't vest until the ALF CO is achieved. So thank you for that part of it, there's nothing to come back for an approval on if we have an ALF CO, right? So thank you for that, that's, that's a good thing. What we want to be able to do is keep the dialogue open, which I think we're going to, to come back here in a few months when you see things in the ground and down the, on the, you know, growing up and progress being made, to keep that option open to revisit the idea of selling those additional ones and contributing that money towards the fulfillment of the ALF requirement.
Aman, what, what you need to have is some context. And what you just said triggered this is the twenty twenty-four resolution was a big step for the town board, or for the planning board. Because we went from, or the planning board went from saying, yes, you have overall site plan approval, but then you have to get individual site plan approvals for each phase. They went from that to saying, we can live with, you're getting, you could, with the site plans already, you can get all the site plans for each of those phases. You just can't do the construction until certain conditions are fulfilled. So they made us, you know, that was.
On E and F.
That was all intended to provide more certainty for lenders.
So thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
But on the phase E and F, originally the provision was you can't get a building permit on E and F until you have the ALF certificate of occupancy achieved.
Right, but you can get your site plan signed and that was the critical marker that we were dealing with in twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
And where the planning board said, yes, we can still say that we're consistent and complying with the zoning while giving the applicant additional flexibility.
Okay, so what we would prefer, and again, we may not solve this here, but what we really wanted to have is the ability to make the sales, to tame the money, put it in the trust. Because if we sold those units with the knowledge that we couldn't get a CO, it'd be a little bit of a problem on a conveyance issue because they sold them something they can't get the full benefit of. So the idea is that we wanted it removed, we're still going to pursue it and, and with milestones so that you can feel comfortable that this isn't just words here. We have our documents in return and review. We're using the same team of attorneys that did Woodland Ponds, Nixon Peabody is going to be underwriter's counsel. They're reviewing the documents now. We're making an overture to the Elsa County Commercial Issuing Authority for their approval for a bond to do some resolution. So we're really trying to replicate the success of Woodland Ponds. And we do believe there's going to be a lot of spillover because I think they're having a lot of wait lists right now for that facility, which I think this town would, this project would benefit from because it's just a stone throw away. So, but again, thank you for your consideration and your patience and we'll keep in touch and we'll continue to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I guess we can still do the public hearing, have a, open a public hearing. So if I could, could I have a motion to open a public hearing? Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go. Any, any, excuse me?
Is that an approval?
No. Any opposed? None and any abstentions, seeing none. So we will ask people from the public, and I will say this one more time, just please keep the modification issue at hand in this conversation. So if there's anyone here from the public that would like to speak, raise your hand. Come on, nobody wants to talk now?
Oh, just to the modification.
Yeah, this is just to the modification. You can come up, Mr. Epperson, that's fine. And, and we're limited on time, so we're going to have her do a, what is it?
Three minutes.
Three minutes, we'll do, three minutes. I remember you, Mr. Epperson, you like to read. So at three minutes, don't be surprised if I either take that microphone from you and ask you to step back in your seat.
Turn the mic on, Mr. Epperson, turn the mic on, please, state your name.
My name is Bruce Epperson, I live at three fourteen Bellevue Road. The use of a certificate of occupancy as opposed to a building permit to enforce a planning condition, in this case a PUD development agreement, is always problematic. And in this situation, will not work without modification. In its present form, it will result in one of two scenarios. Either non-regulation, that is the development of the residential component, proceeding without regard to the progress of the ALF, or second, lengthy, expensive grinding litigation on behalf of the town and the developer. As a planning and zoning manager in Florida, I used COs to enforce PUD conditions. These were residential, single-family PUDs. The COs were withheld pending construction of designated amenities such as entrance features, recreational amenities, swimming pools and that kind of thing. This was not for things like roads and sewers that affected the habitability of the structures that were being built. So it was analogous to what this kind of situation is. Withholding the COs was relatively non-controversial because our chief building official operating under the state building code would issue a temporary certificate of occupancy to each home as it was ready. Whether he was obligated to issue a temporary certificate of occupancy to a building code compliance structure was strongly debated among my staff, but it was never really resolved because there was a moot point. This is because the enforcement of the certificate of occupancy was in the hands of the private sector, not us. With a TCO, the structure was accessible and occupiable, but no mortgage company would accept title of the home as clear as unclouded. No closing, no money for the developer. Theoretically, a buyer paying cash could close, but this was such a small percentage of the closings that we didn't have to worry about it. But here, we're dealing with ground rental units. The temporary certificate of occupancy is good for six months and infinitely renewable. The rental project makes it just as good, at least in the short run, as a full CO. Can a building official who is acting under the authority, not of the town, but under the state of New York and its statewide building code, deny a temporary certificate of occupancy to a structure that is safe, accessible and ready, ready to be occupied in all its particulars? I don't have an answer for you, I've tried to look it up, I don't think there's a precedent.
You want an answer?
Yes.
It must be zoning compliant from CFC. Is there zoning determination and compliance?
So that's how we do it here in Highland.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
That is different than it, than it is in the state of Florida.
Yeah.
I would still recommend, at a minimum, it would be necessary to add the words or temporary certificate of occupancy to Mr. Van Cot's proposed amendment language. I doubt that the developer would agree to this because I doubt that this is what the developer wants or intends as the purpose of this development.
That's your time, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Epperson.
Is there anyone else that would like to come up and speak? Sir, you raised your hand, if you don't mind, come on up, state your name, if you don't mind. And I'll tell you the same thing, three minutes.
I won't, it won't take that long. My name is John Vett, I live at seven Roberto Avenue. The, what it looked like the applicant was trying to do was move the control of the approval from, from your control to the lender's control, right? This is what this is essentially, right? I just, I'm dead set against that as a, as a person living here, I feel that, and you were leaning in that direction, it seemed to me for sure, and talking about how lenders, you don't want to put it at the mercy or the control of the market and people who are lending rather than the municipality itself. That's really just all I have to say is, don't relinquish that to the market because they can do whatever they want. Really, that's basically all I have to say.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone on Zoom land?
Raise your hand.
Please raise your hand if you have some comment. Anything, Dave? No one else? We could move to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
I could, so that's what I'm going to do. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so public hearings closed now, so remember, just because we don't want to deal with that here. I've, I've seen it happen, it's funny. So with that, if you could, do you have the draft resolution available? I want to hear just the changes, that's all I want.
Just to.
Just, just the, the resolved parts, the resolved clauses, yes. You might need an investor for that one because it's going to cost a lot of money. Paul, take the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, thank you.
That was, now therefore be it resolved that the applicant's request for a modification to the amended site plan approval is denied without prejudice, which means they can come back and make another request. And the planning board's amended site plan approval remains in full force and effect as approved by the planning board on August twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four. Be it further resolved that if any part of this resolution is annulled, the remainder shall stay in effect. And as required by New York State town law, a copy of this resolution shall be filed in the town clerk's office within five days after its adoption and a copy shall be sent to the applicant. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption.
Can I have a motion to accept the resolution red?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to do a roll call just because. Bill?
Aye.
Aye.
Scott, aye?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Jerry? Thank you. So that resolution has been, we passed the resolution, but we didn't give them the authority to get the modification they wanted, all right? So there we are. You all good?
Miss.
Okay, now we'll go back to our scheduled agenda. Oh, that's a good point. If, if you, if you're looking to leave because you were hearing here for the villages and you want to take off, I would ask that you could do that now if you don't want to stay to see everything else. That way you're not interrupting the rest of our meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a great holiday, everybody. Yeah, I, I got to tell you, for the public, you guys are lucky, you got two councilmen here tonight. You've got a, a judge and, and you've got.
Me.
I was going to say, I knew you would be, be upset if I didn't say something. So, but yeah, so a lot of people are here tonight. And you have the public, I always love when the public comes in because you guys usually say something pretty smart and then I'm like, jeez, I didn't think of that. Well, it was quick and easy, I thought it was going to be more people leave.
Mm-hmm.
You think there's popcorn at, at people's houses right now as they're watching it on TV? I know Freddie's there, Freddie's, Freddie's there for sure, brighten me up. Freddie and John are both board members and they're both home tonight, they're not well. And Lambros, I don't know what happened to Lambros.
See Fred.
Freddie said he was going to watch it on TV, so.
Wow, there you go.
Yes.
Okay, so next on the agenda is Alicia Ledoux, special use permit is nine Lisa Drive. The public hearing is set for today, so I'll start off by, is the applicant here? Online, would the applicant like to speak to the project, please? Do you want to speak for her? Come on up.
Come on up to the table.
We're just going to say dad said so, that's all it is. Well, there you are, you said it there, the microphone's great, your voice comes across everybody very well. So if you didn't hear him say that, he's just looking to get this application.
Just looking to get this approved. Not a big project, very local, up the street, four minutes away. We have a contractor, we have things all ready to go as soon as we get approval here.
Good, so I will ask staff if they had any other comments to this project?
None whatsoever.
No, we're good, so I'll ask someone to open a public hearing?
Alicia? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions, seeing none, public hearing's open. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on behalf of this project or against that? Sir, if you could take your seat again, ma'am, you can come on up and state your name, please. Now, it's about this project, right? It's not about the, any of the other ones going on?
No, it's, it's about this project. I'm Christine Garberino, I'm from eight Lisa Drive. I would, I'd like to know a little bit more about this project. The, my neighbors are lovely, I have nothing against it, I just would like to learn more about it. I'm concerned about, you know, this is a single, single-family residences. It's a very, you know, sort of peaceful neighborhood and I'm concerned about increase, you know, not just, you know, the, the current residents, but if they move, you know, what, what sort of folks are, are going to be renting this place out?
I'm going to have Dave speak to it a little bit.
Hi, so you can look up on the big board. This is the, basically a square foot, the footprint of the house. This is the garage, which faces the street, as you know. It's a one bedroom, because that's all we allow. It's well under the nine hundred square foot maximum that we allow. It's a one bedroom with a living room, small kitchenette, small bath, and this person will have access to the laundry, right? So that's it. We only allow one bedroom because we didn't want to have two bedrooms because we felt that would make it too family. We did increase the size recently to nine hundred square foot, but that is all it is. This is the little kitchenette, peninsula, end wall. And yeah, these are the walls that'll be constructed.
Are there any restrictions on the number of people that can, that can live there?
Yep, the building code allows a certain number of people per square footage for bedrooms. This bedroom is a hundred and forty-five square feet, so two.
Two people can live in this apartment and then in the main structure of the house?
So the main structure is whatever it is now, right? Minus this downstairs space. So whatever was allowed before, that's, that's what we call the principal structure.
So that would be additional, so if there was four bedrooms, right? That would be, how many people, how many people can live in a four bedroom?
Eight theoretically, but I don't.
Depending on the size of the bedrooms, right?
Well, well, again, well, let's try this. Well, well, again, well, let's try this way. I grew up in a raised ranch, a long, long time ago, and my sisters had a bedroom, I had a bedroom, and my parents had a bedroom. There weren't two, two, and two, and two, right? It was...
Right.
So...
But that was your family.
That's true.
And, and so if this family, this moves, they're, they're new to the neighborhood, but they could move, and so I could wind up with ten people
You could.
living in that, in that home.
If you don't mind, could I just do this? The house isn't under review. The apartment is. Okay, that's what we're concerned with here, is the apartment, not the whole house. Because your other neighbor, your other neighbor could sell their house too, and you don't know who they're going to sell it to.
And that's completely fair.
And that's why I'm saying that.
And that, that's completely fair. But, you know, so we're, we're essentially saying that we can have two additional bodies residing in that home. That could be two additional vehicles. So is there going to be amendments for two additional parking spaces? Are there?
Pretty big driveway.
Yeah, he's got a very big driveway, nice parking areas right there.
Got two car drives.
So, so they'll have, they'll, parking will be in the driveway?
Yeah.
Not on the street?
All parking.
The theory behind an accessory apartment is as your parents or your grandparents get older, they move in with you so you can pay for that?
Right.
Does that make sense?
Sure.
And I think that's what's going to happen.
It's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars you can get for, for that too, from, from...
Detached only. Yeah, Olson County.
And that's also controlled rent or value too, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, actually, I did a little research, and turns out that these accessory apartments, this was a peer-reviewed paper Sept, that was published September twenty twenty-five by the Regional Science and Urban Economics. That was the, that was the paper I found it in. So it shows that with a point five percent increase in ADUs, that's, that's what this is, that results in a three percent decrease in property values for homes, you know, within four, four hundred feet of the property with the ADU. So I, I know you guys are just the town board, and you have to go by the code.
Where the planning board?
Could you, could you, could you send that, that, that paper to the building department? You have, you have cards down here? Alright, I'll get your card before you leave. I'd love to see that paper, you know. Be helpful, helpful in future.
So, so, you know, again, I, I'm not trying to make, you know, problems for my neighbor. They're, they're, they're lovely folks. But I'm, I'm concerned about down, down the line.
Sure. Okay. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Is there anyone on Zoom land that would like to speak? No? Can I have someone make a motion to close the public?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, so if we could do the resolution on that one?
Resolution.
And started the...
This is for a special use permit and site plan approval. Accessory apartments are a type-two action under SEAKER, so no further SEAKER review is required. And now therefore be it resolved that based on the applications and the findings herein, pursuant to the zoning code and town law, New York State town law, the planning board hereby approves the special use permit for the project. Pursuant to the zoning code and New York State town law, the planning board also hereby grants site plan approval for the project. And the chairman is conditionally authorized to sign the project site plans after receiving confirmation that all fees owed to the town have been paid. Be it further resolved that upon execution of the site plans by the chairman, the town's code enforcement officer is authorized to issue any zoning permits, building permits, or other permits approval to allow construction on the project to proceed. Be it further resolved that this approval shall expire if the special use approved hereby expires for more than twelve months for any reasons. Be it further resolved that if any part of this resolution is annulled by a court, the remainder shall stay in effect. Within five days of the effective date of this resolution, a copy shall be filed with the town clerk, and a copy shall also be mailed to the applicants. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Have a motion to accept the resolution as read. Thank you, Charlie, and second?
Second.
Bill? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Your project is passed. You can tell her Dad said so. Good for you. Next on the agenda is Be Well Special Use Permit, thirty-five sixty-five Route nine W. Public hearing was set for tonight. We'll open it tonight. Is there anyone here on behalf of that project? Come on up, sir. If you don't mind, state your name for the public.
Greg D'Agostino. So good evening Chairman McCarthy, Vice Chair Long, and members of the planning board. As I mentioned, my name is Greg D'Agostino. I'm a partner at Ten X Strategies. I'm joined by my colleague Kerry Larson, who appeared for you previously. On Zoom, we are joined by our architect, Arlenus Dominguez from Vivid Architecture, and the owner of Rosie Botanicals, Caitlin Kalman is with us tonight as well. So we're here this evening on behalf of Be Well Holdings, New York, doing business as Rosie Botanicals in support of their application of a special use permit and site plan approval for a New York State licensed adult-use cannabis retail at thirty-five sixty-five Route nine West in Highland. Rosie Botanicals proposes a nineteen hundred and eighty square foot adult-use cannabis dispensary with an existing standalone building. The project involves an interior fit-out and some exterior modifications. The interior renovations includes the construction of a sales floor, point-of-sale area, cannabis storage vault, offices, and an ADA compliant bathroom on the first floor, and a second-floor mezzanine with a break room and office space. The exterior improvements include replacement of existing gravel surfaces with new paving, installation of pedestrian pathways and stairs, and upgraded lighting for safety and security. The property is located at section eighty-eight dot one-seven, block nine, lot twenty-five dot one hundred in the general business district, where cannabis retail sales are expressly permitted, subject to the special use permit and site plan approval under Town of Lloyd Code. Tonight, we respectfully request that the planning board approve the site special use permit for an adult-use cannabis retail dispensary, and approve the site plan for the proposed interior fit-out and exterior modifications that I just outlined. The application before you is complete and fully compliant with all Town of Lloyd zoning requirements, New York State cannabis law, and Office of Cannabis Management regulations. This project will delete, deliver meaningful benefits to the Town of Lloyd, including the creation of ten to fifteen local jobs with positions in retail, management, and inventory roles. Our staff will have the opportunity to be promoted from within to positions including inventory manager, assistant general manager, and general manager of the store. Also, the store is estimated to generate approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in local tax revenue annually for the Town of Lloyd, and forty thousand dollars in annual tax revenue for the county, for Olson County. In addition, as you might know, there's a nine percent sales tax that will be applied to the store, forty percent of which is allocated to education funding statewide, forty percent to community grants for healthcare, housing, and childcare across the state, and twenty percent to drug treatment and public health education. Rosie's will provide safe, regulated, access to tested, labeled, and regulated cannabis projects. This reduces reliance on the illicit market and protects public health. The proposed site is compliant, and as previously mentioned, is located in a general business district where cannabis retail is permitted. The location meets all the distance separation requirements under MRTA one-one-nine dot four and Town Code one hundred dash fifty-two dot one E three. In addition, Rosie Botanicals received provisional licensure from the Office of Cannabis Management on February nineteenth of two thousand and twenty-five, and the required municipal notification for this site was mailed on August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. The site features eight onsite parking spaces, inclusive of one ADA compliant van-accessible site. And the parking meets the Town of Lloyd Code one hundred dash twenty-nine and two requirement. In summary, Rosie's Botanicals presents a fully compliant, well-designed, and community-oriented project. The applicant has demonstrated commitment to safety, security, and operational excellence. We welcome the opportunity to provide the board additional details on any aspect of our application, and we look forward to addressing any questions from the board, and welcome comments from the public. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask the staff first if you have any comments that you guys want to ask.
I just have one clarification. It's not GB anymore. There are loose zoning maps floating around the internet. It's now gateway, gateway mixed-use, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that is reflected in our, in our records that Paul has.
Paul?
Also, I think it's important to note, then, and Dave can confirm this, that the project as applied for complies in all regards with the zoning code, including the section regarding marijuana establishments that was recently adopted by the town board.
Andy?
We have comments on this.
Okay, Bill, now board members?
I just have a question about your estimates of how much revenue is going to be generated for taxes. By my quick math, it looked like you were estimating four million dollars a year?
Yeah, that's, that's based on a four million dollar gross revenue.
Okay, is that based on other places you've been involved with, or how'd you come up with that as a?
Yeah, so as you look at markets, and we actually work on these types of projects in other states in the Northeast, so if you look at sort of a market as it matures, in Massachusetts in particular, as you guys know, that's been legal since two thousand and eighteen, they started opening stores. So when the market settles, you know, generally stores average about four million dollars across the state, so you certainly have twelve million dollar stores. Those are, you know, sort of the high watermark, and you've got people operating two, two-point-five million dollar stores. So that's sort of where we think the long-term, you know, gross revenue settles.
And does the, the, the new stores opening in close towns like New Paltz and Marlboro going to impact that?
Yeah, there's a bunch...
And the applicant is going to come after you.
Yeah, there, there's a number of factors that play into sort of how that gross revenue gets adjusted. So when the market's still relatively new, like in New York, and supply is a little lower, and storefronts start to open, the prices are high, right? So when you're looking at that gross revenue early on in the marketplace, you tend to see that, you know, those stores are generating a lot of revenue, then competition comes in, right? More doors open in the adjoining cities. Also, supply goes up, which drives prices down. When you drive prices down in, in a cannabis market, you actually bring new customers into the marketplace because you've got lots of people that are still operating in the black and the gray market, and where they're purchasing their cannabis. So if right now you got to come to my store to buy a vape pen for forty dollars, and you're getting it from your buddy for twenty-five, you're going to still go to that gray-black market, whatever you want to call it. As that price compression occurs in the marketplace, and it's a guarantee, I mean, we've seen many, many markets across the state, then, and it comes down, it's twenty-five dollars in my store, why bring those customers in? So a perfect example of that is if you look in December of two thousand and twenty-three, five, five years into the opening of the Massachusetts market, a little less because they didn't start opening stores until the end of two thousand and eighteen, they set a record for revenue. And, and it's because the market during twenty twenty-two, you can actually look at the regulatory website, the Cannabis Control Commission, and you can watch the revenue, excuse me, the retail price of cannabis go down over twenty twenty-two. So then, surprise, surprise, in twenty twenty-three, you actually see overall gross revenue in the marketplace go up, and you've opened more doors, but all those factors are at play.
Thank you. What is your estimated time of opening?
We're, we're actually in very good shape. We've got our construction documents done, and Alana's on the line. She may have some input on that, but we're thinking it's somewhere about six to eight months.
By spring, summer, next year?
Yes.
And you're only involved in commercial sales, correct?
Correct. Yep. There's no, no onsite consumption allowed at the facility, no, no loitering.
Okay, anyone?
What I was getting at, no manufacturing onsite?
Correct. Yep.
Hours of operation, did we get that, those numbers?
Yes. So what we had proposed was Monday through Thursday, eight AM to eleven PM, Friday and Saturday, eight AM to twelve AM, and Sunday, nine to ten. Yes. So, so typically, we sort of look at the outside boundaries of, you know, what might be acceptable in terms of, you know, where we might have customers that want to shop. The reality is, is as we learn about the demand, we typically amend those hours to what's appropriate. But certainly in this setting, when we're, you know, trying to be as open as possible on what could occur, that's what we request. In practice, it's likely to be certainly more narrow than that.
My one concern would be being open till twelve AM is the residents that live right behind you. So if you could kind of control the people that come in and out of your store at that hour of the night.
Yep. Yeah, and, and certainly, I mean, I think there's some flexibility there. I, I think it's very unlikely that those will be our hours. I think we have some openness to amending those if that's, that's the wish of the board. So certainly, I could propose something separate if that's, that might be, provide some more comfort.
Well, is this the one you got the letters on? Is this the project you got letters from Olson County on?
No, there wasn't any.
No, oh, from the planning, from the Olson County? Yes.
They had some concerns about trees, I thought, was that on two ninety-nine?
Their, their concern was primarily, it's a fairly open space. It's paved, gravel.
Oh, that's two, that's two ninety-nine.
That's two ninety-nine.
Two ninety-nine, that's the other one.
Nine W.
This is nine W.
So what was the county's?
They have no, I mean, A, they didn't have quorum, but yeah, there was no...
Yeah, you're, you're not bound by their comments, but their comments, they didn't have any issues.
There's really no county impact because the, it's an existing building, just like the other one.
Right.
They did give us comments the other one about landscaping, but that's outside the scope of, you know, the renting.
Of the rent.
Renting space. I, I don't mean to take away from this project.
So yeah, we'll, we'll focus on this project too.
And, and the only thing I wanted to mention is, you are required as a planning board under the zoning code to specify the hours of operation. So that is something that's entirely within your discretion.
Scott, so I've spoken to other municipalities, other building inspectors around, who have dispensaries in them, and it's, in their experience, it's very orderly. Alright, the people don't, the people go into the store, they purchase something, they get back in the car, and they go wherever they're going to go. There's not milling about, you know, around the building, smoking or, or jamming gummies in your mouth, or whatever it is. Why don't, I don't know, Bill, you know, I mean, help us, Bill.
Well, it's not, it's not considered a lounge.
It's not a lounge, yeah.
Dispensaries, and then you have these dispensaries slash lounges.
There is no consumption on, on the, on the property. So, I mean, I think that speaks to your, your concern, Franco.
I want to say I think we mentioned that at the last meeting, yes, yeah.
Okay.
And there were a couple other things too, I think, with you guys, security cameras and different things like that, you said you were going to have there and stuff, so, I mean, we see how you're with this. But as far as the hours go, that is something to consider, but I would say more so that you're willing to adapt those hours based on your use, or, or based on your sales. And when that's happening, I would strongly urge that to be something that you could watch over and, and make those changes if necessary.
Yeah, certainly, and there's an economic reality to it, you know, if you got headcount in there, because you have to have, you know, multiple people to appropriately manage the store, and so it just doesn't make sense.
Are there, are there any houses behind?
Yeah, Roberto, that's, that's...
See Roberto's a circle there, but...
Well, that's the dead end of Roberto, but there are two that's the whole side of the street.
Yeah, yeah. And it'd be somebody's here. Yeah, we'll see, we'll get to that when we open the public hearing.
Anything else?
No.
Anyone else?
Happy to answer any questions.
Other staff? No? Any other board members? Jerry, anything?
I'm good.
You're quiet over there today, Jerry, that's why I'm kind of like, come on, wake up, talk to us. Yeah, I don't think Jerry is, that's for sure. Not that anybody else is. I didn't mean that. Alright, that's what I'm getting at. How about we have a motion some... How about we have a motion, can I have somebody make a motion?
Motion.
Public hearing, second please. Bill, thank you. Public hearing's open, I would ask, we can get public up here to speak. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on behalf of the project or against it? Come on, one of yous come on up, state your name.
One of yous, two of yous?
You're the guy. Good, how are you?
Good, I'm Bill Carroll, I'm with the.
You're speaking to the mic because the meeting's being recorded. And then everybody on Zoom land can hear you or watching TV.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. I'm Bill Carroll, I'm with the Oslo Tino's family that owns a Gateway Diner next to the, this property. This property is kind of under a cloud. The Gateway Diner family has been complaining about water runoff from this property for quite a while now. And it indeed does run off from this property. And there was, when this building was built, apparently from what I've seen, I haven't, I don't know everything that's gone on over the last few years. But the drainage system was, from this property was moved to the diner property. And the contour of the property sends water over into the diner area, diner property. And I have, I have some of the old plans and the contours and things like this. And I have some of the, from two thousand fifteen, the engineering reports and everything. And if I look at the reports, it would give no indication that there should be any problem. It seems to be correct. But what can happen, I'm construction for a hundred years or whatever, fifty years. And sometimes a building can be built, contour changes just a little bit. And the water runoff changes. The original engineering report said it should be sheet runoff and that it should go to the rear of the property. It really doesn't. If you look at the property, if you see the property, it just curves down around right to the diner property. And the, the family has been trying to get the property to the people who own the property to do something about the water runoff. So now, this is the first time I've heard it, but I'm sitting here saying, well, now we're gonna, correct me if I'm wrong, if I heard it right, that they're going to repave the outside or regrade the outside or put gravel in or do something on the exterior. I don't care, anything you want to do on the interior and knock yourself out. But if, if there is an inadvert, even if it's inadvertent problem, would this exaggerate it, would this, would this, you know, maybe it'll help it? I don't know. But, but while, while there's a problem with this property and the owners next door are trying to basically fighting with the owners of this property, it's under a cloud. And now we're, now they're trying to get a, a business approved, enhancing the use of the property and, and repaving and doing stuff on the outside. Well, what if it makes it worse? Who, who do they go to, what happens? The family sent the letter to the property owner saying, we want you to get our water, basically saying, we want you to get your water off our property. We want you to get, yeah, yeah. We want, we want you to get, you know, your drainage basins that, where I don't know if it's the drainage basin you can see there, but that basin is, is dry. If you look in that basin, basin, it's, the leaves are in there are dry.
This is what he's talking right here, there's a fifteen inch drainage pipe.
Right.
And I believe all this runs north.
Yeah.
And then it actually runs down to the twopills still somewhere.
Right.
It dumps it down there.
I was there the other day, that first.
That's it.
Yeah. But if you look at that first doghouse there, the first basin right over the property line, I was there the other day and it was dry as can be, it doesn't, it does, the water does not run off into there. And, and if that's good or bad or what happens, but it's dry. You can open it up tomorrow and you'll see it's dry even after a rain. So that basin isn't working. And if you look at the, the property and, and you can see the contour lines, water comes down, makes the corner and heads right towards the diner property. It's, it's right there, you're seeing it right there. It's got nowhere else to go. And that water coming down that driveway does not hit any of the basins. And there used to be a line that, that's, well, some old, old plans, there used to be a line that went actually under the building. So it's under a cloud. The neighbors are, are, been trying to fight this for years. I'm new to it, you know, I'm under theirs, I'm trying to help them out. And, and how do we, how do we approve, enhance a building, enhance a business, approve a business that's going to use to outside modifications when we already have a problem? So at least nothing, nothing against the dispensary or anything like that. But this needs to be looked into a little, little deeper. And, and I don't know if plans are approved or what. And it, again, I'm, I'm going to say it, it could be inadvertent. It could, I mean, it could look great on paper, but not really work in the, in, in, in reality. And that's what's happening now. So there's been letters back and forth to the owners and letters from attorneys and stuff like that. And the family sent the letter out saying like, you know, we just want to, you know, cut this drainage, any drainage that's coming from your property, we want to cut it off. In other words, we, we want to, you know, help ourselves in, in doing something to keep this water from, from coming onto our property. And, and letter, letter came back and said, said, you know, you know, we're not allowing you on our property, blah, 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 blah. And we have no intentions of doing anything on their property, but we're asking that they do something on their property to ensure that there's water runoff is not there. So, I mean.
So I'm, I'm going to say that building's built and I don't know with the, with the changes that they're doing. That's grass right there is what they're doing there all in front of it too. And right now, what is it, it's gravel? So the grass will absorb some more water that's runoff in that area, fair to say. Been in the construction not quite as long as you because you're a hundred years, I'm only forty something.
Well, I'm more alike with you, but you know, it feels like.
But I'm looking at that and that's what I'm seeing, I mean, some of the greenery that they're putting in there. And this is an issue, here's what I'm going to say, tell me if I'm wrong. I don't believe this is, no, I'm talking to the attorney. I don't know if this is something being a special use permit for the, for the business is something that we can really look at at this point. This sounds like it's been an ongoing thing that maybe should have been resolved in a different manner other than here at this planning board meeting. Fair enough?
Question is who owns the pipe and then go from there.
And you are doing site plan approval, so I'm going to turn the microphone over to.
Okay.
Well, I mean, but so there is some.
But like you said, with us even looking at this, we don't know of that. I mean, I know personally, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah. Some of the conversation that's gone on about this water, but I've heard it before, so.
And, and you know, as, as I was listening, I was thinking if, if you all were to approve the project, maybe it's something that could at least be looked at a little bit in terms of this pad site's contribution and, and as part of the building permit process. Anyway, I just.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I'm not, I haven't been to the site in a while. So I do remember when it was approved, but it's been a while. I, I would say maybe the best thing to do is if, if, if Dave would prefer, I'd be happy to go take a look at the site and see. Yeah. That's fine. Yeah, happy to do that.
Yeah, I, I guess probably that's great, that you're going to look at it and everything like, like that and maybe it would just be resolved, maybe resolve either. Maybe that grass will even help.
That's fine.
You know, which would be great. But we just want to make sure that this issue is resolved before any other enhancements or businesses approved or anything on there that could make it worse or could make it more difficult to get resolved.
Well, it raises the question.
I agree with you, I definitely don't think I'd be saying yes to a car.
Yeah.
Is, is there a prior approval then, recent or within your timeframe?
Not for this system. As we, as we correctly mentioned, the pipe used to run under the building.
Yes.
Right, that's where it was originally. It was moved in order to put the building there. But the, it moved it. They had an engineer who designed where the next system would have to be to drop that.
Did that move it where the green line is now onto the property or? Yeah. It used to be under the building.
Yes.
Now it's, now it goes around the building.
Hold it, hold it, we, it's not open that way, we, it's not open forum. We're going to have one person come up at a time. I said three minutes, but you really had a bunch of stuff to say on that one. So, and then enlightened us to something that we were unaware of, to a degree anyways. But we'll get your turn though, I, I like how you pushed him up here first, but you'll get your chance. Okay, well, you remember that, what I'm talking back there. And that's where I was going with it too, you know, we're talking about the use part of it.
Again, I have to say, just experience in construction, it could be inadvertent, you know, it could be just the contractor graded something a little different than on the plan, you wouldn't even know. And it, and it sends water everywhere. For some reason, I have a lot to do with waters and leaking lately, but this will be fine. Yeah. Do you want to meet there?
Continue on with this now or? No, I'm, I'm asking, should we wait based on what comes back from the engineering?
Well, that's, that's up to you. I mean, what they're suggesting is they could, you could go ahead and prove the use.
Right.
And then they can try and do whatever they can under the building permit that they, they need to issue for the project.
If you make it contingent on fixing the pipe, gives more incentive.
About finding the issue, we don't find the issue, I mean.
Right, it needs to be investigated first.
I understand that, but we can investigate and say it's your problem because you got, he's already got his permit, so I don't have to fix it.
No, it's against the law to run.
How many years? How many years has this been going on?
There's been a fight between the people, a ten years.
That's ten years.
So.
That place has been there a long time.
So, you know, we just want to resolve the issue and move on. I mean, it's not, we don't want to hold anyone up or anything, but we just can't abide by.
They'll take a look at it.
Yeah. Good?
Yeah.
We're good?
You're good?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else from the public that would like to speak? You two, come on up. And you two in front, you guys are talking a lot of every, you have nothing to say.
It just said they should get a, a water.
There you go.
There he is.
We have him right over there.
That's him.
Hi, I'm again John Vett, seven Roberto Avenue, I'm actually up around the corner from there. I, I was, I came here tonight because I thought the, the public hearing for the project on the north side of this was being talked about today.
Well, that's already been approved, that's not.
Well, good, I was for it anyway. Yeah, so, but here I am and, and this is happening in my backyard, so it's cool. Just a couple of comment, a quick comment and a question. So I'm all for this, I'm sure I'll be patronizing it. The question about the, oh, actually, when they did the Shamrock Building, there was some concern about this access back there. And they put the berm up and they put the trees up, it was really nice, they did a great job, so it was, it was, it was well done. So we're really happy about that. Really, my only questions about this, this building now getting this use. I had written, my first question was hours of operation, you guys brought that up, so. I, I have, again, I get it, it runs late, Shamrock's open late, we go there often to get something to drink late in the evening.
You don't have to explain to us.
But, you know, midnight is kind of late, I would think, you know, eleven, twelve. And if, if the board could put conditions of those hours of operation, limiting those to maybe ten, eleven, but midnight seems awfully late to me. Again, I'm all for it, but that's my comment there. The only other, one question about the site plan there, those trees, are those new trees that are proposed? That's the ones that are there now, okay, great, so that's, that's cool. My last question is about lighting. Is there a lighting plan, is there, I'm sure they're all night sky compliant, but I just want to, you know, our house is kind of right across there almost. So is there foot candles, you're getting zero, it's a lot, yeah, okay. Yeah. Oh, and the dumpsters are over there on the south side. Great, okay, that's really all I had to say then, thanks.
Thank you for coming up.
What hours operation is the liquor store, eleven?
I don't remember, I don't know. Anyone else from the public want to speak on behalf or against the project? Anyone in Zoom land? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second. Spot today. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. You're up, Paul.
This is also a type two project because it involves the reuse of an existing building for a permissible use under the zoning code. So no further seeker review is required. As Dave mentioned, we did get staff comments back from Ulster County Planning, but they had no quorum. So there are no binding comments on the planning board and they didn't have any comments anyway. So now therefore be it resolved that based on the application pursuant to the zoning code and New York State Town Law, the planning board hereby approves a special use permit for the project. Be it further resolved that based upon the application pursuant to the zoning code and New York State Town Law, the planning board hereby conditionally approves and the chairman is authorized to sign the site plans for the project upon confirmation of payment to the town of any and all recreation, escrow or other fees. Be it further resolved that pursuant to the zoning code, one hundred fifty-two point one E, which is the marijuana establishment portion of the code. The project's hours of operation shall be limited to eight AM to eleven PM, Monday through Thursday, eight AM to twelve AM on Friday night and eight AM to ten PM, ten PM on Saturday and Sunday. And be it further resolved as required by New York State Town Law, a copy of this resolution shall be filed in the clerk's office within five days after adoption and also sent to the applicant. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Can I have a motion to accept the resolution as read?
We, we need to make a change there from the PM to the.
Yeah. Oh, I didn't notice that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you read it correctly, but.
Yeah, I got, I, I got my typo.
Okay. Second, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay. It's been accepted. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Zaza Green Cannabis Incorporated, special use permits on six hundred Route two ninety-nine. Public hearing is to be open tonight and if we can have the applicant speak to the project, that'll be great. State your name, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Planning Board. My name is Mike Bodendorf with the firm of Hudson Land Design Engineers, engineer for the applicant. And I'm joined here by the applicant and his team. I have several members here. Spare a minute for a sec. So this is a proposed cannabis dispensary located at six hundred Route two ninety-nine in an existing retail unit. The retail unit is thirteen hundred fifty square feet and it's located in one of the existing buildings at this plaza, better known as Heritage Square Plaza. The parcel is located in the Lloyd Design Business Zoning District and, and cannabis dispensaries are permitted by special use permit. The project consists of interior renovations only, there's no exterior improvements proposed because the site has been developed, it's been operating for many years. The proposed use will not increase water or sewer use or demands. The town code requires thirty parking spaces for the total square footage of the site of seven thousand six hundred and twenty square feet. And there's thirty-seven existing paved spaces on the premises. It has two curb cuts on Route two ninety-nine that will remain, one on the north, or sorry, one on the west and one on the east side. That's generally on a high level and we'll certainly open to answer any questions that you may have.
I think we ought to ask a lot of questions.
Yeah, I would, but which, which of the buildings are you going?
From the left. Okay, so it's the left building.
No, that's, that's the right building.
The unit on the right side of the left building, that one. The unit on the right side of the left building, that one right there.
And that just north of that is Lowe's?
Yes.
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 That's all.
Yeah, I read the, I read the minutes.
There you go. Good. Good job. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, I'll go to staff first. Staff, anything?
The only thing I would note, again, I believe this uh, project application is zoning compliant. The only uh, difference I think we have here is you all have not yet received your New York State license. Is that correct? I, I just couldn't find it in the application.
We haven't received the, 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 the license.
You have?
Yes.
Okay.
You got a copy?
But we'll just, we'll just need to, yeah. We, we have a, a condition here that will require them to provide a copy of that.
That's what we want to see.
That'll work.
It's at this point.
That'll work. That's great.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No manufacturing on the site, right? Just commercial sales.
Correct. Retail sales.
All hours of operation?
Nine to eleven, nine AM to eleven PM. Seven days a week.
And signs, you're going to have um, pretty, pretty much what's there. I'm, I'm looking at, they're on the building too, aren't they?
In the existing structure, I think there's a monument sign.
Yeah, I thought there was some there.
Yes, there is.
Sorry, don't mind me. I don't remember. I just wanted to make sure. Okay. So it's on the building.
There it is.
And there too.
Oh, yeah.
This was the last build, uh, set of buildings in the town Lloyd that were allowed to have roof signs.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And security cameras, all that stuff. No added lights on the outside. Whatever's there is there right now. Um, I'm thinking of anything else that we were considering. No, go ahead.
They may even want the front. Um, it's not especially, I mean, it's looked from the highway and certainly looked from Central Hudson.
Right.
But they may want more pedestrian friendly stuff with downlights in the front. That's up to them.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it's an accessible, very accessible building. You could just walk right to the door from the car or from the parking lot. So, or right, right from Lowe's, you're going to walk there.
But what's behind, what's behind these?
Uh, pond.
Water.
There's no, no homes?
Nope, there's a pond.
Never mind.
Big pond.
No. Anyone else? About that, that's.
I don't think the lighting is going to affect anything.
Unless you got a houseboat. Unless you got a houseboat there, Bill. Right?
So my, my question was this one had Ulster County.
Comments.
But have they seen them? Has the root developer seen them?
Those are, again, came from staff, not from the planning board.
Yeah, we, I'm on that board and we had, Bill.
Let them know that this is what's being recommended?
We, we, well, I think their recommendation. Yeah, it's not a recommendation. It was only a comment. That's it. And especially since that's an already existing property. I think one of their concerns were um, shrubbery or stuff, right? Landscaping and whatnot. So I mean, since it's existing already, how can we make the rental put shrubbery all running outside of the, the property there?
Okay.
And the state right away there consumes almost the whole yard.
Right. Oh, it does there? Oh, wow.
Where the sign is, the sign is actually in the state.
Oh, my. Okay.
Yeah, that's not good. And he's. Yeah. Hey, good.
Okay.
The sign is actually ready.
Okay.
Yep. It's in the middle of it.
Anybody else got any, anything?
There'll be a sign on the front of the building, no consumption onsite.
By, by statute, you can't have any consumption onsite or in the store. You lose your license.
Well, we know that. That's in the story. We're talking about outside even. It's not around that area. On the property.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and, and we might understand the statute, but people going up there to purchase, they're just, so I got mine and you're going to start lighting up first.
Usually assigned inside the store and on the, on the outside of the door.
Well, they may walk around the building.
They could, yeah.
To the pond?
Go swimming.
Okay. So we're, we're that far through. I, I mean, I see that. Uh, your hours of operation again? Did you say that? I'm sorry.
Nine AM to eleven PM.
Okay.
Seven days a week. I mean, he's out and he's out in the middle of nowhere. There, there's not a lot.
Well, it's commercial. Like you said, it's very, very commercial.
A lot of contractors go by there.
Yeah, that's going to be great. You guys will do well. Um, okay. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Public hearing's opening. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on behalf or against the project? I'd ask if there was anybody in Zoom land, but my buddy just left the computer. To the judge. He must be in trouble. That's great. They're all gone now. Anybody from Zoom land would like to speak uh, to this project?
Raise your hand.
Please.
Yes, sir.
Seeing none? Can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Not for this? Why? It's still the same reason. Resolution, sir.
Okay. Uh, again, this is a special use permit and site plan review. Uh, it's a type two action again because it is reuse of an existing building for permissible use under the zoning code. Did go to the county and we did get comments from staff. Now they're comfortable with the applicant. Uh, now therefore be it resolved that based upon the application pursuant to the zoning code and New York State town law. Planning board hereby approves a special use permit for the project. Be it further resolved that based upon the application pursuant to the zoning code and New York State town law. Um, the planning board hereby conditionally approves and the chairman of the planning board is authorized to sign the site plans for the project. Upon providing proof of a license for the project from the New York State Cannabis Control Board. And two, confirmation of payment to the town of any and all recreation, escrow or other fees. And be it further resolved that pursuant to the zoning code, the project's hours of operation shall be limited to nine AM to eleven PM, Monday through Sunday. And be it further resolved that is required by New York State town law, a copy of this resolution shall be filed with the town clerk within five days. And uh, shall also be sent to the applicant. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Great. Can I have a motion to accept the resolution as read?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Same.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Good luck, guys.
Let me ask you, Dave, is there a?
When, when are you, when are you opening? What's your, what's your timeframe for opening?
Three months.
Three months. Okay.
Yes.
How many of these in the town? Can be.
There is not, but there. Only two. Um, yeah. So there has been discussion on this because, you know, as a town, we don't really want them. You know, I, I think there's a thousand foot um, separation that they have, that has to be between, you know, dispensaries. But I don't, as a town, I don't think that's a great idea for us having them as a situated, one on one end of the town, one on the other end of the town, on our major corridors. I, I, I would agree too. Um, if there was ever another one, it'd be a, a, a third one at the corner of two ninety-nine, nine W, if anything ever happens there. But that's.
But what if there was, these are commercial sales. What if there was a manufacturing facility?
So, so interestingly, um, New York State Office of Cannabis Management also gives licenses for that. That can occur in any ag zone. And agriculture is allowed by right in our ag zones and our residential zones, one acre, two acre. So um, it's possible that it occurs there. Um, I know that there is one on South Street. Um, that is sort of. I don't know if he's even operating. I haven't, he hasn't, I've talked to him in quite a long time. But he put, you know, a couple of buildings there, um, you know, kind of these construction trailer type buildings. Um, in order to process, uh, you know, product there. Again, all regulated by the Office of Cannabis, Cannabis Management. Um, and ag, so as a town, we really don't have much say in it because agricultural is um, A, regulated by the state. And uh, as of right in those zones. No site plan, no special use permit required. And we don't regulate it in our zoning code. The only thing we regulate are dispensaries and lounges.
Okay. Okay. Sorry to get off track on it.
Yeah, yeah. That's a.
Okay. Anything?
We're just sharing where those, where those structures are.
Gotcha. Okay. Congratulations. Good luck, guys.
We need those chairs now.
Yeah. That's great.
Thank you.
We're all a bunch of comedians here tonight. Public. I've got the earth laughing their asses off up front. I'm dying here. Fjord Vineyards LLC Site Plan Route nine W. Um. We're, we're set for a public hearing tonight also, and I would ask if. The applicant can come up and speak. Oh, you're for that too? I'm sorry. And you know, I know, thought that last time we were here, right? You did both. Yes. It's convenient.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Planning Board members. Once again, Mike Bodendorf, Hudson Land Design Engineer for the applicant. I'm joined here tonight by Stephen Spaccarelli. Uh, of the applicant team. So this is a proposal for a proposed wine tasting facility on a thirty point two seven acre parcel located on the east side of nine W. Just north of Milton Road and across the street from Perkinsville Road. Um, the parcel is currently actively farmed with vineyards and vegetables. Um, the proposed building. Uh, will consist of twenty-nine hundred square feet tasting room with a thirty-three hundred square feet covered patio for outdoor seating. Uh, there's going to be a hundred, total of a hundred eighty-two seats proposed, mostly outside. And the oper, at peak times, operation require up to eight to 10 employees. The proposed access drive will utilize an existing farm road from the east side of nine W, which is at the north end of the parcel. Um, the existing access drive grades are compliant with town codes, so there'll be no extensive regrading, just generally retopping and smoothing out. Vertical curves where necessary. Uh, the road will be resurfaced with gravel over compacted sub base suitable for fire truck uh, traffic and other heavy vehicles. Uh, the town code requires sixty-one parking spaces for the hundred eighty-two seats. And the revised plans provided to the town provide forty-one gravel parking spaces and two pods of. Ten field spaces, and that's the old plan that is up on the board there. But to the left of those field uh, spaces that you see there. Uh, there's another pot of, of ten field spaces. Um, private well will be drilled to provide potable water for the use. Um, and a sewage disposal system is being designed for, to handle uh, wastewater. Um, the disturbance will exceed one acre. So we're subject to a. Stormwater pollution prevention plan that has been provided to the town. Um.
That's the original survey. So I provided a, a revised set in November.
Revision, yeah, revision date eleven, ten, twenty-five.
So there's the SWIP. Yeah, that, that should be the one. But that's not.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Gotcha.
So yeah, this plan shows the, the additional ten field spaces adjacent to the ones that were on the previous plan. Um, there's two stormwater management areas located adjacent to the parking area just west of it, and there's another stormwater. Uh, management facility to handle roof runoff from the building. Yeah, we're. Yes. And if you uh, proceed to the next page, it shows more detail. Actually, where are you? You might be on the. Where we are here. Very odd.
See a large site.
That's a site plan.
That was a large site plan. Go to the next page, Dave.
Yeah, there we are. So that, that shows all the, the grading and um. You know, sewage disposal, the system is, has been refined. We've done soil testing with the, the health department. Um, we've done preliminary soils, soil testing for the stormwater facilities. Um, so the next round of plans will, will have more information on all of those details.
Did we get comments back from DOH?
Yeah. We got an email from DOH saying they were. I think I was.
We do, we don't have approval from them yet.
They're going to want to take a pretty close look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a public water system, so there'll be a water treatment system design. You know, it's a pretty sizable septic system.
Yeah.
It shows on the.
So yeah, there's three tanks there, septic tank, pump tank and a grease tray trap.
Right.
Okay. Anything else?
Uh, hours of operation, Monday through Thursday, eleven to five, Friday, Saturday, eleven to six, and Sunday, twelve to five.
How many bathrooms do you have in that thing?
Do we know?
How many, how many bathrooms?
Um. I don't.
You're only showing four inch sewer line coming out of the building. And I'm just wondering whether that's big enough? I mean, it's, it's a commercial building. Usually a commercial building.
We could upsize it to six.
Six inch?
Four inch for handling.
And, and what you want to do is put back to back clean outs up against the building? This way you don't have to, everything will be done from outside.
So you're, you're willing to change it to six inch?
Absolutely. I mean, it's, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's really the purview of the, the health department, but.
Cause I'm thinking once this place is rocking and rolling, them bathrooms will be swinging.
You're drinking.
They're drinking and eating, right?
So there's no, there's no evening usage of this space. I heard three hours. Nothing past six o'clock.
The hours again?
Uh, Monday, Thursday, eleven to five, Friday, Saturday, eleven to six, and Sunday, twelve to five.
Nice.
Yeah, um. Just to add real quick, um, since you asked the question, uh, the applicant was adamant that there'll be no large event type spaces, right? There won't be any weddings or.
Correct.
Bar mitzvahs. Do they do them at wineries? Um, anything like that. It's just best tasting.
Only at the Kadeem Winery.
Oh, ah, good point.
Yeah, it's a very wine focused, like farm to table experience. It's, if there's music, it's very like. Direct, subtle in the environment. There aren't concerts or gatherings like of that nature. We, uh, I'm here representing my brother and his partner who are doing this. I'm, I'll be helping build. We've been helping design. Uh, but they've been operating since two thousand nineteen at the same location in Marlboro. And there haven't been any concerns with neighbors. Um.
Okay.
But yeah. Plan is to.
See the electrics on the, um, on the print now with, that's a good thing. Okay. Anyone else from staff? Anything?
We have some comments uh, we issued earlier today. Sorry for the late notice. Um, we did issue some, we, we reviewed the SWIP. We have some comments that should be addressed. Most of them are pretty technical. Not any showstoppers to speak of. Um, wondering about the status of the DOT. Have you had any conversations with them? Not like, kind of hard to get in touch with. Okay. But. So we'll need something from them before the plans are signed, you know, because that's true.
They did approve, or they kind of green lighted the turn from both directions. At first we assumed that they were going to want like a one. You know. Right turn. Yeah, but they seem to like, see that the clearance is sufficient.
Okay, good.
So it all looks good.
That's good. Um, you mentioned health department. Definitely want to see that before, you know, um, before plans are signed. Did you get any feedback from the fire department on?
Not yet. I got a text from Casey just explaining that she spoke to them and saying, I'm. I don't think I have anything concrete, but yes, they've been in touch and I think.
Okay. I mean.
I think the comment was is, as long as the plan allows for turnaround, that they have no comments.
Yeah, I mean, the grades of this driveway seem to be okay, so that should be fine. Um, turnaround and access is really the main thing I would be concerned about. Make sure they can get to the building if they need to.
We, we do have a, a fire truck template in the plans.
Right. Yeah, I saw that. That'll be good. Is there a dry hydrant? And there's something in the pond, right?
Yes.
So they're going to need in. You have a gravel road down to that? Like.
So there, there is a gravel road pretty close to it on the south side of that pond. Um, that's generally what's being used more so now than the other access. So. I believe that the dry hydrant is on the east side of that pond.
Sarah, would you take that computer from here?
Yeah, it's on the east side of that pond. So what we could do is move it to the south side so that it's more accessible from that, that other ground.
Yeah.
Talk about a generator too.
Or a pump station.
Yeah. Did you put that in there too? You were trying to figure it out.
Not on the plan yet, but we'll, yeah, there's the hyd. You want a generator. There would need to be access.
There would need to be access. I mean, if they if they plan on accessing it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, right.
Yeah, but sometimes they like to draft, you know, they, you know.
Yes, the only other comment we have is that there's a swell along the driveway that's discharging along the edge of the 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 road, the nine W. We just want to make sure that that is, you know, the water is going to be properly directed into whatever, you know, roadside collection there is. Obviously, we don't want it.
Yeah.
DOT is gonna have the same comment. They don't want it rushing out into the road.
So the topo doesn't really represent it well. There is a fifteen inch culvert that goes beneath the driveway, and there's a pretty good sump at the inlet of that. So I tied my grading into that contour, but it's just, it doesn't, it it's deeper than two feet, but the topo doesn't really.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. They just wanted to make sure that that's gonna work out all right, so.
What kind of conditions that fifteen inch CMP? Have you taken a look at it?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it was pretty grown over, but we can get a better look and maybe even put a camera down it just to make sure that it's not.
That'd be a good idea. Be a good idea.
Where you're gonna have the neighbors up the road or wherever that water is going and coming in ten years later telling you that they want that water to re divert it, is all I can tell you on that. I know. There you go. Okay, anybody else? Okay, good. Can I have a motion open a public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, public hearing is open. We got anybody who wants to speak on behalf of the project or against it? Come on up. These gentlemen will clearly make you a seat. State your name to the microphone.
I'm Lewis Hayward, and I live adjacent to this property. And my question is basically about traffic and use, because there are three actual entrances to this property. I know there's a right away. I don't know if it's a right away, but the one they're talking about is being used right now, which is very difficult to get in and out of from nine W. It's a, it's a farm road, basically.
That's the one that's to the north side of the pond here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Well, that's not the north side. That's the.
That's the south side.
South side?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And the pond is beautiful. They did a gorgeous job on that when they created it, but I know that there were drainage problems with it at that time, and I think they corrected all of that.
Is it still holding water?
As far as I know, it does.
There you go. Fix it. They fixed it.
Did it work?
But there's also another entrance to the property that you can't see here that's off of Van Orden Road. And that was used originally, again, for farm traffic to get up into that property. But my concern is that if the traffic goes out the way you have it, in and out the way you have it there, that's fine. But if it's diverted down here past this pond, that's not good.
So again, that print right there, that what you're looking at, that is depicting what they're going to do and what the where the use will be.
Right.
So I I hear what you're saying, but I don't see them putting anything else down in any of the other roads, especially with the topography being on that hill, you know, it's going up a hill, so.
Right.
Yeah, now where that's where that sits is on top of a little knoll.
Sure.
Which is which is fine. But I'm just saying that that's one of my concerns. Then the other one was obviously use. And you kind of cleared that up because there's nothing else going in there. It's the wine tasting, so that's fine.
Great.
Yeah, that southern entrance is like pretty dangerous.
It is.
Or like we would, I mean, we're looking forward to being able to enter enter the property in the proposed. We would never route people out of there.
Well, I just meant even even the other one, as far as somebody going in and changing, you know, whatever, but.
So you're gonna abandon the existing one?
Yeah, yeah, the incline is terrible, the just pulling out into traffic in that section is dangerous.
Yeah, that's, that's a problem.
Okay, good. They have to speak. Paul, what do you have?
Yeah, I just to allay your any concerns about that. If the planning board approves this site plan, that's the entrance. That's the only ingress egress that's allowed. And if they ever wanted to do anything different, they'd have to come back and you'd have another shot at it. I assume the farm work would go up this this entrance, let's put it that way. Wouldn't go in that. I you'd have to ask them. I mean, which is what it's been, yeah.
Yeah, not really. I mean, we intend to propose main drive entrance for whole.
Oh, really? For everything?
Yeah, it'll be much easier for us to come in and out with.
Okay.
You know, tractors.
Okay.
Dave, did you have anything? Someone on on Zoom who would like to speak. Okay. Mr. Caden?
Hi, everybody. I'd like to thank the town planning board for your endurance and attention, and and also your service to the town. So thanks all very much. I appreciate having the same comment. I think the entrance from the facility from nine W is just fine. I was concerned about the entrance from Milton Road, but if they decided at any point to change the access to the Milton Road access, that we would be informed later on. I'm a property owner just to the west of the property, and so that as the previous, as your in person visitor here has described, it is a sort of difficult area to to get in and out of. I have two questions. One is, will there be continue to be agricultural use on the rest of the of the property in addition to the tasting room, or are we gonna, is that just gonna be gone to the wayside? That's my question.
There will be continued agricultural use of of the vineyard.
Okay, and then.
Goals to actually sell, you know, what they make.
So I I I have only seen it a little bit, but I don't think that there's a vineyard there now. It's mostly what a hemp growing facility. It's not really a vineyard, right?
No, there's a vineyard there now.
Yeah, we've we've already.
Hold on one second. I'm gonna give you the mic.
Yeah, the plan is for the entirety of the acreage, other than parking and for seating for tasting to be planted in under grapes, and I think we're, what's that? Yeah, and septic. Yeah, we'll be growing the grapes in the septic field. Yeah.
Plenty of nourishment for the grapes. That sounds great.
You get the good one.
Exactly. All right, last question. Thank you very much for that one. And the last question I had was, I read the 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 transportation report. Is there a, does the state have any sort of a recording of alcohol related traffic incidents associated with entrance to facilities where the where the sole purpose is for the consumption of alcohol? Is there any, is there any experience or history of 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 an increase in in traffic accidents having to do with consumption of alcohol when such a facility is open?
That's a good question. This is Dave Barton, the building inspector. I do have some knowledge around this. It's a question that I asked for this and a few other projects. In addition to the two we the board approved tonight, the cannabis use, the state does not track uses against alcohol related accidents or drug related accidents. All they track is location and whether there was a fatality or not. Actually, Jerry, you might be able to speak to this more.
They'll compile it. It's all fractured, you know, local PDs, state, county, city. So you could compile it, you could get it, but it's just gotta do a little work.
Yeah, so it is possible, as as Jerry suggested, that that data could be collected, but the state does not track, and I don't know that we track against use. It's just location, cause, and injury or fatality and or property damage, I think. Just just so you know, the, but the, plenty of remember Jerry who just answered some of that as a as a police officer. You know, so, you know, he has good insight.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else on Zoom range? Dave? No one else? No other hands up?
Nope.
Sorry, I can't see that far. And I have my glasses. I'm just not putting them on. Okay, well, can I have somebody close the public hearing?
Hold on, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, could we have that resolution?
Yes, and for this, we have a site plan approval resolution. The board previously undertook a secret review because this is an unlisted action, and they issued a negative declaration under secret determining that no environmental impact statement would be required. This is, so now therefore be it resolved that based on the application pursuant to the zoning code and New York State town law, the planning board hereby conditionally approves, and the chairman of the planning board is authorized to sign the site plans upon satisfaction of the following conditions. And I've had to add a couple that I'll build in based on CPL's memo this afternoon. One, confirmation that any remaining comments from the town engineer have been satisfied. Two, proof of conceptual approval from the New York State DOT for the project site access drive onto New York State Route nine W. And I'm eliminating and for any utility installation based on consultation with Andy. We will add conditions that they need to obtain proof of SWIP coverage and a New York State DOH permit.
County.
Also.
Andy, I'm sorry, Ulster County. Yeah, sorry. Ulster County Health Department permit for the project. And then finally, confirmation of payment to the town of any and all recreation, escrow, or other fees. And be further resolved that prior to the issuance of a building permit, a preconstruction meeting will be held between the code officer and the construction contractor. Be further resolved that is required by a town law. A copy of this resolution shall be filed in the town clerk's office within five days of adoption of the resolution and also provided to the applicant. And be it finally resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
A motion to accept the resolution is read.
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Congratulations. Good night.
Good night, ladies.
We're gonna talk. All right. Keep up the good work. Keep up the good work. Take care. Merry Christmas. Okay, last but not least, you have the North Polaris revocable living trust. Thank you. Sorry, we want to keep going. The revocable living trust, one ten Belvedere, I'm sorry, Bellevue Road.
Belvedere, I'm sorry, Bellevue Road.
Bellevue Road, and the public hearing.
Bellevue Road, and the public hearing was.
Hold on one second. Where's that coming from? Is it reverbing?
I'm sorry. Ari's on the.
Oh, well, I'm still reading it. So I forgot where I was. But anyways, the public hearing was open on eleven twenty three, and here we are today. Again, anything from staff?
We're we're still looking for more of an indicia of ownership of the property, confirmation that North Polaris now owns the property, and also that Ari Kadek, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing it, is authorized by the trust to or authorized to act on behalf of the trust in making the application and being the applicant for the short term rental permit.
Is either guy that gets arrested if they're doing something wrong?
Need deed filed.
He's somebody I need to have a name.
Yeah.
And again, as Paul suggests, we need to have some knowledge that the applicant can act for the trust.
True. So that was my question when I I talked to you about this. Can we proceed with this or leave this open still until they get that paper? I would think.
I think it's better to leave it open. That would be my recommendation.
These documents should exist. They should be able to send them to us. This is the applicant.
Right.
He can answer what he has there.
It was a little disconcerting. I mean, it it appears that there was a recent property transaction, because when I looked up on the real property tax base for Ulster County, you know, it's an entirely different owner.
Right.
And I looked through the deed research and under trusts in Ulster County, and there's no recorded North Polaris, no recorded deed for any of the names that we have in front of us. So I think we do have a closing statement, so I think what the planning department did was, you know, in good faith, but I think we need to dig a little deeper.
Well, can we have to dig, or can we ask them to provide it to us?
They do. We need them. We need them to provide.
To be clear, it was the applicant who gave us the closing statement.
Correct.
But that's all, that's all we got.
Yeah, and and so I think I think what we need from the applicant is a deed if it's been recorded, or even if it hasn't been recorded, it's something that's a signed deed.
Right.
And then whatever instrument was used to authorize Mr. Kadek to act on behalf of the trust. That's something that the town should have for its files as well.
Agreed. All right, okay, well, that's where we're at with it. I hope the applicant heard all that, and they can provide us with the information necessary for next month's meeting, so maybe we could move on with this.
Ari, you there? He's muted.
Hi, this is, hi, this is Ari Kadek. Can you guys hear me? Sorry, I'm on Zoom. I thought I didn't have to come in today based on the last meeting where I was there in person. Thank you for the comments. I did not know that was required, but I can easily get that. The property is in the name of the trust, and there's also a trust document which I'm named as the trustee. So I can provide that if that's what's needed.
Yep, yep, thank you. I tried to email you on the email address that's on the application. So you can look for my email address, or you can send it up.
You can look from.
Sarah.
Yeah, I did not receive any mail. I had been corresponding with Sarah. I can also send the documents to Sarah if that's easier.
That's fine.
As long as we get a copy of it, that's fine. So now what is it? Where does that put us? Can we go forward with it or not?
I I would just, I would just, yeah.
Yeah, let's wait. I'm just asking because.
He needs to change some stuff anyway. Ari, what you need to do in your house rules, you list ten occupants, you, we allowed you six. So can you change that? And then get that, to get a new copy to the town?
Yes, yes, absolutely, yes. Yeah, that was, yeah, Sarah had told me right when I put in the application to change it to six, so we had understood that it would be revised to six immediately.
I remember that, yeah. Yeah, you're definitely gonna have to change that and make it compliant to what the the law is, so.
Scott, you could go ahead. If we know the date, you could do this at the work session. It is.
Okay, well, we, yeah, there's nothing really much more about that one, but.
Just to tell him the date.
It's gonna be third week of January.
No, no, sorry. Sorry, Sarah.
January sixteenth. Sorry.
So we would need all the information before Christmas, like the next couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Ari, is that possible?
Quit yelling.
Ari?
Sorry, I didn't quite hear that. Would you mind repeating that?
Can you get us that information before our next meeting?
Yes, I can send it tomorrow.
Super. Great, thank you.
But Ari, could you also, for your own reference, check with the clerk clerk's office for why these aren't showing of record? Because anyone who's checked online does not see your deed. No, I had a document recorded in one day.
You may have it recorded, but they're behind, putting it on the line.
Okay.
For it to be found.
It's IT versus the record.
Okay, so we we do have someone here from the public that's, since the public hearing is open still, would you like to come up and speak, please? As always, state your name, which most of us know you.
Joan Kelly, five Grapeville Lane, which is right off Bellevue, okay? So I'm really happy you caught that, that it's, since this is a septic system and it's three bedrooms, you limit the the guests to to six, so I'm glad you took care of that. I would like to point out that there are at least six houses in the water over front bluff area that are now short term rentals. And I think it's time that the town looks at the ordinance and establishes a maximum limit because you're gonna end up with the Hamptons here. because you're gonna end up with the Hamptons here, you know? And Bellevue Road is so narrow that you can't get a stripe down the center. Okay? And what happens is you get landscaping people who park and take up a whole lane and you get people from out of town who don't know what's going on. And we're gonna have a collision there because it's hilly, it's curvy, and and it's just not set up for a whole lot of traffic.
And I'll point you in the right direction. As far as your concern is what needs to be changed, you might want to go to the town board and have them address that. It's not in our purview. We can only hear what's going on with what your concerns are with it.
And and the other thing which I'm gonna have to take up with the town board is I'm really concerned about fires along the bank of the river. There's no good way to get water there. We have had a fire that CSX started and you get people from out of town who don't never used a grill in their life and that sort of thing. They flip their cigarette butts into the. So I think we can say maybe we should have no burn permits in the water over in the bluff area. And I'll take up those concerns with the town, but the owner should probably include that in his house rules, like no live fires, no kiki torches, you know, no bonfires.
Is that what you're looking for?
Well, if you have a barbecue grill, just don't empty the hot coals over the over the hill, you know? It's like, it makes sense to us, but for someone in the city, they think, oh, good idea, you know? And and we've got to do something about the parking. Because even the mail truck.
These are all not, this is.
They're all not.
It's all street parking, if I'm not mistaken. Wasn't that's how we did that, yeah.
Okay, but so until we get the town board to deal with it, I would appreciate the rules for the place being updated. And I will pursue the town board trying to get a limit on the number of short-term rentals that you can have in a in a certain area.
Perfect.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Joan. Appreciate it. Okay, we're gonna keep this public hearing open till next month till we get the pertinent information that we're there. So we're done with the agenda for the most part. I did want to take a couple of minutes out while the judge was here who has served our community for, I can't tell you how long. It's been many, many years.
Thirty.
Thirty years.
Mm-hmm.
And Terry's a friend of mine and I hate seeing him go, but it's his request and his time. He wants to actually depart from public service as far as that aspect goes. So I'm sorry, he's not here now, but it took a little longer than we thought and he had to take off. But I want to thank him for his service. I think he's done a great job. He's definitely earned a lot of respect from the town people over that thirty-year period. And then also, because Mr. Akamudi is leaving his post as councilman, what a great, I gotta say, when I ran, I lost to you and I couldn't be happier that I lost because you have been an asset to this town. And you've definitely put in more time than I can ever imagine anybody putting in as a public servant. I think you do a great job and I'm sure and people have asked me, they hope that you don't stop doing what you do and you keep going on as much as you can. Good night. Can we give him a standing ovation as we leave? You could do it now if you like, but but I think Paul wanted to talk to you a little bit.
Yeah, well, that that's real simple. I I just wanted to say thank you. It's been an honor working with you guys. I realized, and this is the reason I mentioned it is today is my sixty anniversary with White Men Osterman and Hannah.
How many? Sixty or six sixteen?
Six, six years, yeah. Thirty years before that, my first career was with New York State, with DC, the Attorney General's Office and the Adirondack Park Agency. Great career, really loved it. But I haven't I have enjoyed because, you know, it's been most of the last six years that had been your attorney. And and you all and working with different town board members and Dave and Sarah. It's been fabulous. I've really enjoyed every minute of it. So I wanted to mark the moment because it is my anniversary and it's also the holidays, but it's it's been an honor to work with you all. And to see how, no, I wish I was. It's, you know, I told them when I started, I said, I'll keep doing this as long as it's fun. And believe it or not, it's been fun being with you guys. Even you, Jerry. Seriously. You're all respectful.
That was good, Jerry. Good job. Good job.
All respectful. You know, you all work together. You may not agree with everything, you know, but it's like.
That's what we're supposed to do.
Yeah.
We're supposed to have some conversation, understand different perspectives and hopefully open your doors and your eyes to other things. So I think our board has definitely done that.
Happy holidays.
Same deal. And I and I thank everybody for one more year as being chair and being on this board. I think it's it's great. I love it. I I really gotta say I do love it. So I thank everybody for that.
As a matter of fact, when you started out, when they started with the villages, I said, I thought maybe you spent some time with you before you started talking. It was like, you should have been an attorney.
Yeah, well, I think we've we've had plenty of conversations and I think some of that's worn off on me, so. But but at the same time, I mean, everybody does a great job, our staff included. I mean, I'll I'll throw it out to everybody. Couldn't do it without you, that's for sure. And and I couldn't do it without the board. So I couldn't be where I am and what I do without the board. I think everybody here plays a vital role in what we do. And I really think that the public, I gotta tell you, I got that one letter. I don't know if these all read it from Patricia Chapman.
Yeah.
Tricia, well, it's P. Chapman came up on my phone, so I think it's Patricia, Patricia Chapman. And if you didn't read it, read it. But I gotta say, not often do we get a letter from anybody saying how well we've put our time in and digested a project as we did on the villages. And six years of that, and you know, I mean, you just said six years, but we've been doing it for a long time on that project. And but to have somebody recognize it, you know, we're not the enemy. And I've said this and I hopefully public is still hearing it, but we're not the enemy. We're here following the code.
That's it.
We, like I said, Charlie could want a purple building there. It doesn't matter what Charlie wants. Is it within the code? And I think it was a really good answer, the way we gave them on the villages, their their deter our determination and where we came up with that. It was not hurtful to anybody. We weren't trying to thwart the project. We want to help them succeed because if they succeed, we succeed. And there's a lot of reasons for that. But I I know that this was jammed here, we thought, for more of the conversation of the villages and how people don't want it, the traffic and all that. But I'll say it's good that the public does come together and that they want to address issues and confront us with them. But I think when it comes to things they don't like about the code and they think we're just doing things because we randomly arbitrarily can make a decision, say yes, no, whatever. I think the person having the knowledge of what was going on, you know, she was able to to understand that. And and I kind of alluded to the fact that even though they are out there and their the people are opposed to a project, by them coming here opposing us, and really, we've been through some meetings here where they've been pretty violent and, you know, very verbal and almost to the point of uncontrollable. But I I'll say they just, those are people that we can clearly say do not understand how this all works. So we just take the rules that the town board makes. They make the laws. We adhere to it and we make sure the applicant adheres to it. So opinions don't matter. I've learned that more in the last couple of classes that we've taken. Opinions don't matter. It's great that they they think that they, and I say this because it was the person I was talking to on the phone today. She had she thought maybe like with the crematory, you know, all of that happened. And, you know, we need to really focus on the the election results so that we can make better determination. No, we don't. It's not what we do. If the new elected officials come in and rewrite the law, then we will adhere to the law that's written. But right now, what we have is what we go by, not opinions. And you've heard me say it a thousand times. You've heard me say we follow the code. I I feel for the people who don't think that we're doing a good job or we're in the pockets of the developers. But again, when the when the crematory came through, we only heard it. We weren't even at a point of making a decision. It had to go out for a definition, an understanding of what what the, I'm gonna say, the category it was put in as for an allowance to be done. We needed that determination by the zoning board and it never came back to us. So, yeah, they they rallied and they did all the things they wanted to do. That was great. And it was great show of force and great for the elections, you know what I mean? But but I say it's on them. They need to address the right people, just as Joan, as I just said to you. Your your points are very valid and we'll hear it, you know? But I think you really, again, like I said, go to the town board. And if you're not getting what you want out of them, well, vote them out and put somebody else in that may listen to you. That's the best thing I could say.
Yeah, because the town board sets a zone and we follow it.
Hope these people came in to film running off at the.
Right, right.
I think that I hope there's people still out there listening.
Yeah.
Because, again, they didn't know what the hell they were talking about.
That's true. That's that's fine. But again, nobody takes those, again, I think I told you that today. Civics classes would be great because then you know how this all works. I was blind to it when I first came here. I learned a lot with the people that I dealt with, going through the election, getting on these boards with the county and the town. And I'll tell you, I learned more than you ever could imagine and I still only know a small fraction of what needs to be learned. So and so there it is. And and I I respect everybody for coming here. I love when they come here and talk about what what their concerns are. I implore them to come. I mean, we always like having you come, Joan, right?
So just that, you know, from a civic standpoint, to me, watching this as the planning and zoning board attorney and also being aware of the town board's work. The crematory was actually a example of how good government works. Dave made his interpretation good faith. It came to you all. You know, there was questions raised about the interpretation. You said, let the ZBA decide. The ZBA started looking at it. They were taking a hard look at it. In the meantime, the town board, they're looking at this mess and they're saying, we're not quite sure we want to have crematoria here, you know? And and so they started a legislative process, you know? That's how government works and it worked well, I thought, in Lloyd for that issue. That's just an observation from.
Well, I appreciate that. Very good. Well, thanks to all the departments and all the different boards. I think, again, having those tri-board meetings do help an awful lot, I'd say. They're really good, very informative. So but again, Dave, you got anything?
I don't like any of you.
Uh, you're fired.
Oh, please, I'm out. No, I just wanted to make one point. The Chevy dealer is has a demo permit. They expect to start work shortly. I thought they were gonna start on Wednesday. They are subject to the New York State Department of Labor because there's an asbestos remediation. None of the asbestos is friable. I have reports on that already. But just so you guys know, in case you're asked about this, there will be fencing out there. There'll be signs on the on the fence that say asbestos abatement. Again, none of it's friable. There's an air monitor. I think there's four different sites on the property that'll be monitored in twenty-four seven. That data gets pulled every day from those sensors. It goes to a lab. The lab gets a report back and there's a violation of, you know, if there even is any friable asbestos that gets into the air and is tested for and found. There's there's a whole regime of things they have to jump through, way beyond anything I ever imagined. They actually gave me the report that they submit to the Department of Labor and it's unbelievable. So I just want you to know that, you know, they're watching it. None of us can go on the site when the fence is good is up and the building is going down. That's a Department of Labor state law. So not even I can go on this on the property. It's a, it's coming down. It's a lot, a lot of history, but I think I think it's good coming out of it.
Yes, I agree.
Good.
Good. Well, thank you, everybody. Merry Christmas, happy holidays and happy new year. And happy new year. And thanks again, all of you. We really appreciate it. Now, we're gonna do that now. Got a motion to adjourn.